So thank you, everybody, for joining. This is a meeting of the City Council Maintenance and Development Committee. I'm Jesse Letterman, Chairman of the Committee. I'm joined by my colleague, Sean Curran, who is the other member of the committee. And we also are joined by Councillor Whitfield and Councillor Davila, as well as Councillor Govan. And then we are joined by representatives of the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, as well as some residents. We appreciate your presence as well on the call. So I called this meeting with two purposes. One is to just discuss and receive an update relative to the halocetic acid notification that was sent out to residents in the city of Springfield. We had met on this two years ago, almost exactly two years ago, when I was Chairman of the Health and Human Services Committee. And at that time, we had discussed what was causing the exceedance of the regulatory level and discussed the goals and steps that the Water and Sewer Commission was going to be taking to move towards reducing this level that was being reported. And as a part of that, we are also going to discuss the capital projects and where they stand with the Water and Sewer Commission. So what I'd like to do is start with the HAA five conversation and then move to the capital projects presentation. We're also joined now by the third member of the committee, Councillor Perez. And we are also joined by Councillor Hurst. So I'm going to begin by turning things over to the Executive Director of the Water and Sewer Commission, Josh Schimmel. Josh, thanks so much for agreeing to meet and coordinating your staff for today.
Great. Thanks, councillor, and thanks to the committee for having us. We're always glad to talk about what we do over here at the Water and Sewer Commission. So glad to, glad to be able to talk to you folks about this. So I do want to just let my staff introduce themselves real quick, if that's okay. These are the folks behind the scenes here who do the heavy lifting. Can we take just a minute to do that? And they're gonna, and I'll just call on them if it's okay from going down the list. Anthony?
Good afternoon, councillors. My name is Tony Basile. I am the Controller with the Commission.
Christina?
Good afternoon. My name is Christina Jones. I'm the Deputy Director of Water Operations here with the Commission.
Thanks. Dom?
Good afternoon, Dominic Pellegrino, the Director of Finance at the Water and Sewer Commission.
Great. Darlene?
Hi, Darlene Butrick. I'm the Director of Engineering with the Commission.
Okay, Jamie?
Hi, I'm Jamie Bartak. I'm the Communications Manager at the Commission.
Jim?
Good evening, councillors. I'm Jim Larla. I'm the Director of Water Operations with the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. Nice to see everybody.
And I don't want to make sure. Katie?
Hi, I'm Katie Shea. I'm the Educational Outreach and Communication Specialist with the Commission.
Okay, great, guys. So that's the team of leadership behind us here, who's been helping with this and many other things right along. So with that being said, councillor, can I share my screen? Is that, am I capable of doing that?
Why don't you go ahead and try it? If you're not, we'll make sure you can.
All right, you guys got that?
No, hold on. No, you should be able to now. Yep, here we go.
Okay, all right. So not nothing fancy here, folks, just a couple of slides and really would rather have a meaningful dialogue. Let me just adjust my screen here. Okay, so what I want to talk about today is really you've you've come to ask us about updating on the HAA five and the capital program. So I just want to jump right in and give you a sense of where we are globally and then where we are specifically. So just as a over here. Just for a reminder for folks who haven't heard, heard us speak about disinfection byproducts. Want want folks to know how they are formed and what they are and just take a minute. So we all have a decently clear understanding. So disinfection byproducts are formed from naturally occurring organic matter that's in the watershed that washes into the reservoir. And you can see that here, right? We own a lot of land around the reservoir that has organic material. That that's decomposing leaves, that's dirt, it's any deposition of organic matter. When it rains or seasonal snow melt, those organics wash into the reservoir. We draw the water from the reservoir. We treat it at the treatment plant. We add chlorine to disinfect it. And then from there, that water is stored and distributed out to all of our customers. So that's the simple process. The need for chlorination is really the need for safety. So when we chlorinate that water, that's disinfecting for microorganisms. And that that's one of the world's most important public health developments in the past couple, in the past century is chlorination of water. Unfortunately, there's byproducts when you chlorinate water that has organics in it. And those byproducts that are created, disinfection byproducts, we've been having an issue with haloacetic acids. And that's what we're going to talk about a little bit today. And so what are they? Well, they're they're potentially harmful compounds that are formed from this process. But they're not acutely harmful, just so we're clear. And I think you've seen that in the notices that we that we send out when we do have a violation. Disinfection byproducts like haloacetic acid are over a lifetime or decades have the potential to cause health problems. So you don't see us saying boil water or don't drink the water. And that's consistent with the potential health effects. They're not immediate by any means. So I just wanted to make sure we're good. And then, by the way, folks, I'm not have, I'm not seeing the full screen of all of you, but please feel free to jump in with any questions if you have them. This is pretty informal from our end. Okay?
What we'll do is we'll let you do, we'll let you give us the update and then we'll take questions.
Sure, sure.
Do the HAA five update first, and then we'll do questions, and then we'll do the capital projects.
Great, that'll work. So, you know, what I want to show, and this is a lot of information, but I'll talk about the current year so you know where we are. And then I'll kind of step back a little bit and tell you what we've been doing since we met last. And this is just a good example of the cause and effect of organics, right? So, you know, if you if you look right here, when you look at the, the green is basically like a forty-five-year average of rainfall and the blue, let me move my mouse over. Can you see my mouse moving around? Yeah, okay. The blue is the rainfall from 2021. And here's a great example of record rainfall in July of 2021. And that was over the whole month. And then you can see down here, we're tracking disinfection byproducts on this blue dashed line. Big rainfall. And then you can see a peak response in disinfection byproducts, right? If you can see that right here. Then you go to the next month and you see another big rainstorm. And this was a single event. This was Hurricane Henri. And you can see the response in the disinfection byproducts, right? So it really tracks along with rain, but there's other factors as well. And you can see right here, this fall. This is, you don't see any rain associated with this, but this is what is referred to as the fall turnover at the reservoir. And that's a seasonal effect that happens in deepwater lakes where the reservoir will actually turn over and rather than have a stratified reservoir of differing water qualities, it actually becomes a homogeneous pond or homogeneous body of water where everything is mixed. And that happens every fall. I can say, you know, five, six years ago, we didn't pay much attention to it. But now we track the data and you can see it as clear as day. What you're seeing here is the fall turnover. And that also kind of stirs up all of the organics that are already in the reservoir. So that's just an example of kind of the cause and the effect of what we're seeing. I think, as we've said before, climate change is really having an impact on this. We have not seen, you know, we have not always tracked disinfection byproducts. It's a relatively new regulation going back to 2012. But what we can see is that when, since we have been tracking it, we see this response with rain events. And when we see rain events like this or single, and this is a multitude of rain events, which is, you know, almost triple the forty-five-year average and almost quintuple what it was last year. Or you have single events that are, you know, four and five times larger than a months-long months accumulation of rain, they have real impact. And because we see these more frequently now, we're seeing more organics washing into the reservoir. And we don't have a treatment system that can do that. Again, this is a 2012 regulation. Our treatment plants date back to turn of the nineteenth century and nineteen seventy. So, you know, we're, we're over a hundred years old in some of our treatment technology. And the new plant is over fifty years old. So we're, we're struggling. Our technology cannot treat today's today's organics load. We can get, we can do it fine in some points of the year. But during other points of the year, we're really challenged. And that's just a limitation of the technology. And what are we going to do about that is the question. And so what we have been doing, going back to when we met a couple of years ago, and I think we may have met it even twice. We've conducted a pilot study and that pilot study went on for almost a year and a half to collect the data from our water system to better inform the decision making. And then from there, we've gone into conceptual design, master planning. And then we've, we've made decisions on the technologies and where we're going to move with design. And then the next biggest challenge in all of this is figuring out a way to pay for it. And that really is the largest challenge that we face in all of this. And we've done that. And I'll talk about that in in a little bit. But the important thing here is that we're on schedule right now. We have some projects ongoing, but I think the projects that we're going to see real results on are being designed and will be delivered hopefully by 2027. That's the schedule right now. The world is a little crazy, as you all are aware, but the plan right now with the funding sources that we have is completion by 2027. And that'll be a challenge in its own right. I want to show you a couple of things here. If you see this photo, this is the water treatment plant. These are the slow sand filters, the turn of the nineteenth century. These are nineteen oh nine. There's another mirror image of this on the other side of the more modern plant, which is nineteen seventies right here. So this is what's referred to as a rapid sand plant, and these are slow sand plants. You can see the demolition demolition taking place right here. This is just from probably a month ago. That demolition demolition is making room for a new Clearwell project. That's going to help to some degree with the disinfection byproducts. We have a leaky Clearwell where organics are getting into finished water. This is going to address that. And that that's something that's not going to solve the issue by any stretch, but it is one of the items that, you know, when they, when you add them all up, they impact water quality. So this is a project that needed to be done in order for us to complete and build out the new treatment plant. So what you're going to see here is a new facility here. And then ultimately, up in this space, we're going to see our new treatment plant in of the future. So we're blessed with some property up there, thankfully, and a little bit of space. But as we're as we're, we're tearing out the old technology, we need to be building new technology. And that's how we afford it is the biggest question and biggest challenge. So again, here is just another picture, probably from last week of the same demolition that's taken place. These are active projects. This is a twenty-five-million-dollar project that's underway. All right. And so that that's kind of that's where we are. Delivery of a new water treatment plant and we're we're talking in the hundreds of millions of dollars by 2027. So these aren't the disinfection byproduct issue is a long time in the, in the making and the solution. Although it may appear to be in a long time, it's moving pretty quickly from a design and construction standpoint and a funding standpoint. Let me just look at some of my notes here just to make sure we're touching on everything. Yeah, I think, you know, that that's a basic summary right now of where we are. So, I mean, we're, we have projects under construction. We have projects under design. The anticipated construction for the new treatment plant that would bring us into compliance is 2027. And that's, that's where we are. I want to talk about the funding piece as part of the overall capital updates, councillor, if that's okay?
That makes sense, Josh. So let's jump into questions here on HAA five.
Sure.
And the first question I have is, when we met two years ago and we were discussing the new treatment plant, has that 2027 date remained constant or has that been pushed out?
Yeah, I don't, you know, we did not have a date back then because we didn't have a funding source, right? So that project has changed. So that project went from a process to a treatment plan. So it went from, and I councillor, you know, I may not be right on these numbers. But that went from like a seventy-five-million-dollar process upgrade to over a two-hundred-million-dollar treatment plant replacement.
And what does it, what went into that decision to move from an update to the existing plant into a brand-new plant?
You know, when you, when you look at the technologies that we have and the challenges that we have, not with just with disinfection byproducts, with DBPs and organics, but with the direction that treatment is going and the direction that regulations are going. It was the the process update. I'm not going to say it was a Band-Aid fix. It would have solved a lot of the issues with DBPs. But we would have been left with other challenges that would have required additional, additional spend and investment. And it became very apparent that the appropriate investment, the responsible investment was take a more global look at where we were. Being relying on technology, we were still going to build that process, but we were still going to have to rely on technology for treatment that's fifty and a hundred years old. So that was inserting a process where now it's, we're modernizing the whole plant in order to meet not just DBPs, but all the other regulatory and environmental challenges.
One of the challenges in evaluating this as it has been going on over the last several years is the fact that the, the tracking and the measurements are assessed on a locational running average. And so whenever we've received the notifications, what I've always been looking for is, in the most current round of testing, were the, were the tests actually over the allowable limit or was it being influenced by the past limits? So where do we stand on that with this most recent recommend, or this most recent notification? Are, are, are the testing locations actually testing above the running average? Above the the limit? Or is it the running average that's continuing on? Does that question make sense, Josh?
Yeah, yeah, no, it does. And here I can show you because the answer to that is it depends on the quarter. Right? So, I mean, if you look where my mouse is, you know, we, we were running much better in, in the DBP quarterly sampling for a period of time where we, we were being pushed into noncompliance because of the average, not because of the the current sample. But if you get, if you get over into this area and this area, our last two quarters, they, they were in noncompliance because the number was high. Not, not astronomically high, like blowing it out of the water, but those numbers are high. So it really is, it's a limitation of our treatment technology. And then we're at the, we're at the mercy of Mother Earth because it's, there's events that are beyond our control that push the organics up. And so what you're seeing, what, and I want to refer to, the, these are the organics, just so not DBPs essentially. But these are the organics that we're seeing in the raw water. So when they jump like this because responds to a storm or responds to a seasonal, a seasonal occurrence, we, we just can't treat that because it's just the organics are too much. So if we have, if we have stable, normal weather patterns, we can treat and meet the standard. But I guess the, the, the reality is, even when we have stable organics, we're just barely meeting the standard. And so it doesn't take much for us to be pushed out of compliance. And I, I think it's really, it's a good question because it's really important for us to be able to emphasize. You know, we, we don't have a lot of contact with folks. We gladly will do it. We put out our notices. We reply to emails. We come in front of whoever asks. The, the compliance outlook is that we are going to continue to be in noncompliance or just in compliance until we have a new treatment plant online. And that's the reality. So I'm not myself and my staff, we're not going to come and say we're going to be good next year because we're not going to be. Because the environment continues to change and challenge us. We're having more extreme storms. Those extreme storms have a much higher impact than storms that are spread out over a month. When you get a month's worth of rain in a single event versus a month's worth of rain over a month, that single event washes way more organics and is far more harmful to the watershed and water quality than smaller storms over a longer period of time.
I'm going to get ready to pass it to some of my colleagues with their questions, but I had one more prior to doing that. And that was my concern, Josh, when we started meeting two years ago about this was the, the look, the running average being just below the exceedance level and the sort of continued ongoing issue. I think at that time, when we were just discussing the change to the treatment process, I think I recall, you know, the year being more around like twenty twenty-five that we would see that come into place. So, you know, with the expanded project that pushes it out a couple of years. But how successful have you been in sort of changing your existing treatment process? Which I understand you can only do so much with your technology. But how successful has that been at bringing the numbers down? And what do you have planned in the interim between now in 2027 to try to lower the numbers as much as possible?
Yeah, good question. I mean, we optimize at the treatment plant like we never have before. So the data that we collect now and that we manage on a daily basis, essentially. We're just far, we're using data in different ways. We're collecting data that we never had before. But even in all of that, so we optimize every which way we can, whether it's we're decreasing storage time at our Proven Mountain Reservoir. That helps. We optimize chlorine dosage whenever we can and other chemical additions when we can to help knock out the, the DBPs. But at the end of the day, we won't, you know, so we continually optimize on a daily basis every possible way that we can. But it won't be enough to deal with storms like this or this or seasonal turnovers. We're just not going to be able to chase that. So what we try to do is on those periods where we have stable weather patterns, where we can get, we can make some gains. We make those gains. I think one thing I do want to just point out is that when you, when you have rain events like this and then you see the response like this and this and this in the organics, it, it's, it's a really bad cycle because when we have bigger rain events and more organics, we have to turn the chlorine up in order to treat that. And so when we turn the chlorine up to treat those, to, to treat the organics, that's what creates the disinfection byproduct. So it, it's a catch-22 cycle. It rains, organics go up, we have to turn the chlorine up in order to disinfect that appropriately. And I think the, and, and so you're just, you're chasing yourself all the time. But just remember, in the, in the larger scheme, and I think we've tried to express this in a number of ways. We're talking about HAA fives is a potentially, a potentially harmful compound that can, if consumed at high levels over a lifetime or decades, may cause a health issue versus immediate boil water orders from lack of disinfection, right? So I just want to emphasize that, like, you know, cholera, typhoid, those are the diseases that you get when you don't chlorinate. And those are the issues that other parts of the world have problems with because they don't disinfect their water. And so when you balance those two things, the potential of, of something over a lifetime versus an immediate cause and effect, we continue to chlorinate and disinfect, which is the appropriate thing to do to have safe quality water. So I just want to make sure folks understand that as well.
Thank you for that important clarification. We're going to move to Councillor Whitfield, followed by Councillor Davila.
And you, Councillor Letterman, Ms. Chair. So Josh, my first question is, if folks continue to drink this water on a daily basis until 2027, when the plant is up and running, you don't foresee any type of issues or sicknesses?
I don't, councillor. I, I think it's I, I don't believe, and I, and we drink the water here. I mean, our facilities drink the water. So I can say that I don't think there's a risk. We have to state that there is a risk because there is. I think if you drank, and I don't think we're at the levels really where if you drank this water for a decade or decades, it's still a potential, right? It's not guaranteed that anything happens if you drink it for a lifetime. And, you know, people aren't going to drink it for a lifetime because we'll have the issue resolved in the next handful of years. So I don't feel like that's a risk. I also don't, you know, we're, we're not able to do it any faster, right? We are doing this as quickly as we can. If it was a, if it was a true immediate health risk councillor, that the recommendation for the notifications would say, don't drink the water. And it doesn't say that. And those, those notices that we send out, those all have to be approved by the Department of Environmental Protection. We're very specific about what gets included and the language that gets included. And so although some of that text sometimes seems alarmist, it is the text that's required for us to put in there. And I don't feel that it, it meets the standard of what we're supposed to do from a regulatory framework. But if it was an immediate health risk, you'd be told that to not drink the water immediately, to stop drinking the water.
Thank you. My next, more like a statement than a question is you received a EPA grant of two-hundred-and-fifty million, I mean, loan of two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. Is that what changed the idea of just treating the water to building a facility? Because I remember when we first started meeting about this, you were like, we just don't have the funds to build this facility that we need to really treat the water. So is that one of the reasons that you received this loan?
Yeah, councillor, that's a really good point. So, I mean, you go back two years, pre-pandemic, right? We met in person up at City Hall. And we were talking about, I think it was, I think it was an eighty-million-dollar process at the time that was going to be an add-on to the treatment plan. And as we looked at that further, as we collected more data and we, and we started thinking about what the what the, what was happening from a regulatory framework and what was happening in front of our own eyes with water quality? Because our water quality has gotten worse. And that has to do with climate change and the size and the shape of the storms. We started realizing that, that just that one process wasn't going to solve all the challenges that we were going to have. And so it was those decisions and realizations that made us think about how in the heck are we going to figure this out? Because we need more. And eighty million dollars is a huge lift for any of us in the water sector. That's a lot of money. And we don't spend that kind of money on a regular basis. We need to, trust me. And so that's when we started to look at what opportunities there were out there to better address all of our needs. And, I mean, we hit the lottery with the Whitfield program. It's a once-in-a-generation program and it was a competitive program. And that's what's going to allow us, and I'll talk about that in a little more detail when we just go into the capital stuff. But that's what's going to allow us to do the treatment plan. Otherwise, I could talk about this stuff for hours. Otherwise, we would have been doing it piecemeal. Like, we would have added that process and we may have had compliance for a number of years. But we still would have had failing infrastructure at the water plant in every which way. And we would, then we would be fixing things that were breaking. Then we would have other financial challenges. And it all would have affected the rates. So when you take a step back and take a more comprehensive view and fund it the way that I'll talk about in a minute, it has a lot of benefits to, to what we're doing. None of it's inexpensive. It's all going to impact rates, but it's figuring out how to put those pieces of the puzzle together most cost-effectively and being able to continue to deliver all of our services reliably, which is a big challenge.
Thank you. My final statements, Councillor Letterman, because I didn't realize we were going to go over the capital part two. When, when we get to these sections is that I noticed that you said in an article that this funding should create about seventeen thousand jobs. And what I noticed when you introduced your leadership team is that there's no persons of color on your leadership team. So I was wondering if you have any type of diversity goals in your, in your future or in your capital planning? And I'll just wait until you get to finance, to the financial piece of your statement. And I'll just wait until you get the finan- to the financial piece of your um statement. But with my diversity, equity and inclusion hat on, I know that I picked up on that right away. So you can address that later as well. That would be great.
Sure. Great. Thanks, counselor. Good to see you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. We'll go to Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh good afternoon, Josh. Good to see you. Uh just some uh some basic questions here. The uh the H A A five, how often is that tested? Is it monthly, quarterly?
It's quarterly. It's a quarterly compliance test.
Quarterly, okay. And how long have we been out of compliance?
I think it goes back to twenty eighteen.
Okay, and wha- what are some of the risks of uh increased levels of H A A five?
Uh you know, I'm not a public health expert, counselor. I think the notices talk about the potential increased risk of bladder cancer. I think that's the, that's the big one that's in there. I don't know. Um I I don't know off the top of my head, and I I don't have one of our notices in front of us, but.
Okay.
It's spelled out in the notices, counselor.
Yeah, some sort of a cancer. Okay, okay. Um. But the notices come from you, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Okay. Now, Josh, um. Question, um. You talked about, if I understood you correctly, the part of the problem here is is to catch twenty-two. You, we're chasing ourselves pretty much, trying chlorine. If I understood you correctly, the increase is because of the increase in. Uh rainfall over the years. Uh so my question is, how much does the water breaks play a role into our current situation?
How much does what play a role?
Water breaks, bu- uh water, p- pipeline, water breaks lines.
Yeah, uh that, that doesn't play a role in uh H A A fives at all. The H A A fives are uh really just uh are linearly um connected. To how much organics are in the raw water.
Yeah.
And so what affects the raw water organics is uh storm events. Uh and then the turnover that we saw. So those are the, a- any events that push more organic matter into the reservoir.
Okay, so Josh, I, even though I'm not expert on this, by no means, Josh. Uh although, by the way, I have had people with the last. Year or so, what has come up to me and say, what's going with the drinking water in Springfield? It could be getting all these notices. Um and by the way, Mr. Chairman, I think this is a great meeting to to. To explain to the people exactly what's happening to the residents of the city. But uh Josh, I did a basic search here and according to the state website says that uh water breaks do play a role. And the reason I ask is because we have had several over the past couple of years, and so.
Yeah, I I I'm not familiar with that site. Uh.
Oh, is it the same website? I'm sure you've seen it.
Uh well, I I don't, no, I have not seen any site that says that water main breaks play a role in H A A five. I I don't see the.
Either, either, or is, you don't think that plays a role in our current situation?
No, I don't at all. No.
Okay, that, that's, that's good. Uh okay, thank you, Josh. Uh thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Perez.
Yes, I think um Counselor Whitfield um asked one of the question. My question, and I'm getting educated, because seeing what you had just informed. Um you have to increase the chemicals. How does that affect when it comes from a human being perspective? And the increase of the chemicals in order for us not to have the water um contaminated? Um I just want to hear from you and get more educated.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, the the chemicals that we use in water treatment have been used in water treatment across the globe. Uh for decades, if not centuries, right? So. Uh I think what you, I, not all chemicals are bad chemicals. Uh the use of chlorine in disinfection again is one of the biggest public health. Um discoveries and benefits uh in the world. A- and uh and that's just a fact uh that has saved millions and millions of lives by uh disinfecting water. And so I don't think there needs to be a concern uh or an alarm in the fact that chemicals are used in water treatment. Because that, that's universally utilized uh at all water treatment plants. I think that there, the the concern um of getting notices repetitively uh over a few years. And reading through a a a, reading through a statement and and then not thinking about. Uh or not having a chance to have this type of interaction where you don't get a sense of what's happening. Uh I, you know, I think we can always communicate better, counselor. Um but the, the issue is, is that we are um, we're moving forward with resolutions, a very complex. Um issues that are going to take tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars to resolve. And so when we step through the process of trying to um get to a point where we're not sending out these notices. Uh and that we meet the water quality standards. We're, we're trying to do it so that we don't make a mistake more than anything else. We can't afford. To make a mistake with this type of money and the effects that it has on rates of the future. And so it's really important that we're thorough and thoughtful in how we make our decisions moving forward. Um and I I I think it's also important that um. Folks understand, like, I I mean, I've been, I've been here for coming up on thirty years, I think. Like, we take a lot of pride in what we do here. Um and a lot of the times, I I have said this. I feel, even though we're in non-compliance on disinfection byproducts, I think we're putting out the safest water we ever have. Um a- a- and it's an odd thing to say, but we are, we, we are at a. At the appropriate level of disinfection. Um so that there's not a risk for a bacteriological outbreak. Um and at that expense, you're in a disinfection byproduct. And I think simultaneous compliance with those two standards is is a challenge for all water suppliers. Um and so we're just balancing that out, counselor. Uh and it's a hard balancing act, and I think the resolution to that is to be spending. Uh the money to build a new treatment plant, which we're, we're underway. So I don't know if that answers the question. Um I think that, like, the staff here are very sensitive to the pride that the community has had in Springfield water. Nobody's more proud of that than than we are, and uh we're the stewards of that water system. And we take it seriously and uh, you know, w- we, we work our tails off every day uh to resolve what the issues are.
And thank you. I just was referring to that because of the chemical safety. I would have not been informed about the issues. Uh and I'm reflecting myself of being in the community. If we don't have more communication with the community when it comes to the levels of chemicals. That affects them, um. You know, this is new information, and it's like a wow, wow factor while getting educated. But I think there should be more communication to the community as well when it comes to this factor.
Uh point well taken, counselor. I would also just advise folks that we send out a water quality report every year. And everything that's in the water is in the water quality report, and so that's available to every customer. Uh each and every year. So that, that includes everything there is to know about what we test for and what's in the water as well, just a- as a point of reference.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Counselor Perez. Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um Josh, I, I understand this is a complicated issue, the FAA five. And um just doing some research on what other cities and towns in New England. Have had similar problems. It gives me a greater level of comfort to know that. We're certainly not the only ones that have had this issue and. I actually, in the course of the last few minutes, stumbled across a study out of New Hampshire, said the. Increased potential cancer studies through animal testing were. An increase of one in every sixty thousand over ten years of exposure. Um so that's, that gives me a level of comfort. Um what I'm, what makes me a little uncomfortable is. How long this problem has been going on, which is we're going on four years, and it sounds like we've got. A few years more before it's cured. And what I haven't found is, is examples of other communities. In Massachusetts or in the region that have had this problem. For such an extended period of time. And um do you know of any other? Water departments or water commissions in New England or Massachusetts that have been. Dealing with this for, for as long as we have and are on this sort of long path to, to cure?
Yeah, I mean, you know, counselor, uh good point, and I, you know, going back two years. I I was far more in tune with what was happening with other utilities, right? Because going back then, we had a really wet year, and there were a ton of people. Uh even just in Western Massachusetts that were having H A A five and other disinfection byproduct. Um issues. So um I think every water supplier is unique. Um very few water suppliers have slow sand filters anymore um like we do. And so what I can tell you is, is that the fact that we have not had. Improvements at the water treatment plant for, you know, fifty some odd years. Um that's an, that's a factor. Um and so, you know, we're making up for that now, and so. Like I said, the, the technology of our two treatment plants that we have just does not meet today's requirements. And smaller plants, it's a lot easier to retrofit and. Um modernize smaller plants. We are not a small system or the second largest system uh in Massachusetts. Uh we have a really big water system and it's like, uh, you know, it's like an aircraft carrier. You can't turn it on a dime. Um really, you gotta plan it out and you gotta turn it slowly. Uh and make sure that all of those investments are in alignment with what you see. We, you know, we're not making decisions for one, two and three years, right? The, the decision we're making right now is for the next seventy-five years. And I just, it's really important for folks to under- understand that. Um rushing in to make a decision to resolve something and spending eighty million dollars, that's a mistake we cannot afford to do. Um I would say, you know, a- as it may appear to the counselors and to the general public that this is taking a really long time. I mean, we've been working behind the scenes um tirelessly to bring forth a, a program that will correct it. And find the funding uh that will stabilize the rates in order to do that. And so, I mean, that's my, that's my response. I- i- it's, it's easy, and I I don't mean this as a criticism. It's easy. To be on the other side of this a- and say exactly what you've said, and and I get that. Um on this side of it, i- it's, you know, we're planning for seventy-five and a hundred years so that we don't have to spend this money twice. And that the problem, this problem is resolved, but so aren't the three others that are around the corner um that we're not talking about on this call.
I understand. So earlier you said, um. And I may have missed this, but you said earlier about capital improvements to, to, for a cure. Uh to the issue and that, you know, we need additional time. Did you? Maybe you said it and I missed it. Did you give a? Projection for what that looks like? I know we're talking about a ten or a hundred plus million dollar fix, as you said, but. Um do you have an estimate for when we would have a plan? Um?
Oh, I mean, our, our plan right now, counselor, is to have a complete. A completely new plant delivered and built out by the end of um, by the end of twenty twenty seven.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
All right, and and like I said, that, that's uh, that's our goal right now. That's what the plan is. The world's upside down, as you are aware, so, but that, that's where we are right now, uh and that's what we're pushing for. And I, and I will say, you know, we have a lot of different uh avenues to deliver that project. And I think that some of our legislators and uh other folks may hear from us about um helping us with. Uh alternative project deliveries so that we can get these things um, you know, designed, bid and built out uh quickly. Uh so.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Uh we're going to go to Counselor Allen, and then I think we should move to the. Conversation on the, the capital projects, which includes the conversation on the, the uh, the, the final treatment plant that will solve this problem. And I feel like we're kind of headed towards that, that conversation anyway, so, uh Counselor Allen, go ahead.
Uh thanks, Mr. Chair. Hi, Josh. Thank you for coming again to meet with us. Um. This is how I feel, and maybe I'm missing something here, but I feel like when we met. Um, you know, say two years ago, whenever it was, you and I had a lot of conversations on this topic. Um at one point, you had said two thousand twenty-five. Well, that was what was in my head. So at the time, and let's say two years ago. Um when it was twenty twenty. Uh it was twenty twenty-five was the target date that was, that's at least that was in my head. So we're five years away. Now it's twenty twenty-two. And it's twenty twenty-seven is the year you're talking about. I'm not trying to do this like a gotcha or anything. I'm just trying to understand what changed in those two years. Did the project? Yeah, I, I'm positive it was twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, you had said. And um what has changed? Because we got this big amount of money. We decided to do a full rebuild instead of an upgrade. Is that it or? And and the, the part that goes with that is, can we get some sort of? Document or project plan or something, high-level project plan, so we can understand the milestones. Between now and twenty twenty-seven. So there's two parts of that. Um did something change? Did the project change and become a bigger project since two years ago?
Yeah, counselor, you must, you must have missed it. We addressed that a little bit earlier, but yeah, the project did change. Uh because we were looking at a process uh addition back when we first met, uh and now we're looking at a treatment plan. And and they're two totally different uh items. We were, we were looking at uh eighty million dollars is what I think. Uh as a process improvement. Um but after uh, after appropriate study and due diligence, it became very clear that um. The process improvement wasn't going to address a lot of the other needs. Uh and challenges that we were gonna face. And so it became very apparent that the appropriate. Um decision was to look at a entirely new treatment plant. That would do a number of things for us, including uh compliance for uh disinfection byproducts. And specifically the H A A fives. So that's, that's the first part. So it's a different, it's a totally different project than it was back in twenty eighteen. Uh we were, we were looking at a process. As far as an outline of um the process, I don't have that for you right now because it's. You, you know, it's not a single project. These are uh all told thirty-one different projects as they lay out right now. Um so there's not like a singular diagram, so here's, here's where we are. It's something that we ultimately will have probably as we start to lay out. Uh the bidding, construction schedule and things like that, but. Right now, we're in the process of transitioning from conceptual design to final preliminary and final design. And that um itself, there's just too much, too much slop in that to commit to. What, where are we going to be for bidding and construction? Um so we have no idea. What the numbers are from concept to final and what the schedule will be, but um again, our, our goal. And the, the, the specifications that we're gonna include for our designers. Our delivery by twenty twenty-seven, by the end of twenty twenty-seven, and and that ties in uh Counselor Letterman. Into our capital program, if I could jump into that quickly.
Josh, I just want to allow, I did see uh with us uh a constituent uh who had specifically reached out. Um ahead of this meeting with a question, and I did want to allow them to ask that question, so uh that constituent is Zuma Lee Delgada.
Hey, Josh. Hi, everyone. This is Zuma. I'm in the Lord Liberty Heights. And I just wanted to emphasize that I remember there was a time growing up where Springfield water was considered one of the best waters ever, even tasting, right? And now um even amongst my, my friends, uh and we talk about the taste of. The water, and and I was kind of explaining that I kind of like follow a little bit of climate change and environmental injustices and stuff. And I was, you know, I'm always explaining to them about like how climate has a huge impact. Um even trying to go as far as like, you know, getting them to understand that we're trying to reduce admissions, uh you know. In the near future and how all that adds to pollution and, and, you know, adding to our rainwater. And so I'm just, as we're having these conversations, I'm, I'm curious to know, do, is there any um? Any measurements or any ways that you measure how this um, this new. Of this, the higher chlorine that you add to the water and the acidic erosion to our pipeline um is happening. And are we looking for, when this facility is done, to think about the pipeline that's going into our drinking water? Because it seems like uh we're really, we're talking about, you know, the process, but the infrastructure that leads that water into our. Into our faucet, it's, I don't know, it's up in question. So I'm, I'm curious to know. If in that new budget, right, or in this facility, are we just taking care of the process to clean the water and not thinking right now about the pipeline?
Great question, uh and great point. So Zuma, um we, we have a pretty holistic view of this entire investment that I'm about to. Great question uh and great point. So Zuma, um we we have a pretty holistic view of this entire investment that I'm about to talk about. But uh no, we look at the distribution system as well. Um so those are the pipelines that bring it to the customers. And the transmission system, which is the uh the larger pipes that bring it down from the treatment plant to our storage facilities. And then to the distribution system. So we look at all of that. It's also really important to understand where. Um where acidified pipes were an issue with lead out in Flint as an example. Um, we we have a pH adjustment um at our treatment plant. So that we're not going to see that. And that's a measurement that we take every single day of the outgoing water. So there's not a a um a corrosion uh issue with our water. And that's something we're um absolutely plugged into and we monitor very closely. So any change. In water quality and treated water um gets measured, it gets, it gets um tracked and trended. So that we can see what's going on. I think we have fifty um, I think we have about fifty sample sites throughout the. Throughout Springfield and we take over fifty thousand samples a year. And Sue, you can speak up if I'm off on that, but that that's roughly, I mean, we're we we're out there taking samples in the system every single day. That measure those things that you're speaking to. So I feel really safe in what we're doing. In terms of sampling and making sure the water remains safe. And uh I I, so my still say, we have some of the best water in the country. It's great tasting water, always has been, and uh we'll get it into compliance here as soon as we can. And that's what we're working towards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh, let's let's jump into the capital projects. And I think that, you know, it's very related, so.
Yeah, so I mean, so we just talked about uh a lot of capital on the on the drinking water side and there's some on the wastewater side. But I think, you know, the biggest challenge for for us is obviously funding. And I think, you know, most of you probably saw this summer, um we we had a press event early in the fall, late summer. With EPA and some folks about how we competed for and received the WIFIA program loan for two hundred and forty-nine million. Um which supports a five hundred and forty-nine million dollar investment over the next six years, right? And so that investment is unprecedented uh in this region, possibly in the state outside of Boston. Uh for water and wastewater infrastructure, a tremendous amount of um investment happening in the next five and six years. And I think the thing that I want to point out is, when we look, when we look at all the projects and needs for the commission on the water and the wastewater. Um side and we and we have, we put price tags to them and we try to figure out how to do this. Uh without that WIFIA loan, we were looking at a thirty-year investment with constant rate increases. Um in order to invest that. And the and these aren't like optional investments. These are things that are falling apart actively and that we needed to invest in. And I, we really had a hard time figuring out how we were gonna do it. And it was really gonna have to be year by year. What was the biggest need? We were gonna build a process to come into compliance that was gonna be eighty million dollars. And then what was the next thing that was torturing us that we needed to do because we couldn't address it all? And I think what the WIFIA program did, um it basically took at least a twenty-year capital program. It compressed it into five years. And it was affordable to do that for a number of reasons. Because the terms of the WIFIA loan are better than we can get anywhere else. Um then we leveraged that with state revolving fund, which we're big users of, which is also a very advantageous funding mechanism. And so when you take those two things, the WIFIA program for two hundred and forty-nine million. And I think over two hundred million dollars, uh maybe two hundred uh plus million dollars in potential S R F. You put those two things together and we're talking over twenty million dollars in savings um over the life of those loans on the S R F. And over sixty million dollars in savings on the WIFIA from what we would typically be able to fund. So it's eighty million dollars in savings over the life of these two loans uh or of this pairing of the WIFIA and the S R F. Um and that was a strategy. That was a financial strategy to use one to leverage the other to make these savings. And so we're saving eighty million dollars on projects uh over the next thirty years. But we're getting those projects to you in five years instead of thirty. And and that is, you know, that is just an unbelievable accomplishment. Um and what that does is it reduces, it gets you the finished product. It gets our customers um compliance. It gets them new, more reliable infrastructure in five years versus thirty. But it also reduces a tremendous amount of risk for us. We have failing infrastructure all over our system all the time. Um and and it's the, our biggest challenge is that failing infrastructure. And when something fails and we have to fix it in an emergency setting, it costs us a lot more money than it does if it's in a planned. Bid, does design and bid mechanism. And so the beauty of the of the WIFIA program. And it's the WIFIA program paired with the S R F. It's about thirty-one projects with quite a bit of flexibility. It's gonna deliver us a completely new water treatment plant. It's gonna deliver us an absolutely upgraded wastewater treatment plant. To meet current wastewater um regulations that are new to us, new in our permit. So it meets the challenges of um of our immediate needs. It eliminates our highest risk infrastructure, right? So the 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 process that we've utilized has really emphasized. Reducing risk, um gaining compliance, cost savings. And so when we push all of that together, um we have an unbelievable program, a really challenging program. Because we're really compressing twenty years worth of work into five or six. Um but it has so much benefit, it saves so much money, um we couldn't walk away from it. And so that's the, that is the capital program. Um, I can show you a lot of pictures. I I'm sharing the York Street pump station and the river crossing. That's a hundred and.
Go ahead and share your screen again, because I turned your sharing off.
Oh, okay. Um. Sorry about that. I I was wheeling around there. You probably weren't even watching me before, but uh. So, you know, he here's the York Street um pumping station, uh which is a cornerstone project on the wastewater side. That's a hundred and forty million dollar project that's underway and that's being uh funded with S R F program money. And you can see that from uh West Columbus Avenue, uh really important project to us, reduce risks. Um cleans the environment, reduces combined sewer overflow. Uh. That project, and here it is, uh here's that same building being constructed. But we're also putting new pipelines across the Connecticut River, uh also helping the environment, reducing combined sewer overflow, reducing our risk of a catastrophic. Catastrophic failure of the pipes that are going across the river already, which are, I think, ninety years old. And coming up on fifty-five years old and have never been inspected or taken offline. So when we talk about the investment, it's really, it's targeted strategic investment over the next, well, it it that will never stop. But the WIFIA program itself, in combination with the other programs, uh is five hundred and forty-nine million dollars. Over the next uh five or six years. Um. There are other projects as well that are outside of that WIFIA program, but the thrust of it is all part of this. It's thirty-one plus or minus programs. Those programs address not just the treatment plants, but they do address the distribution and collection system. Which is kind of the retail component for our customers. That's what's in the in the streets of Springfield. Um and that's what gets the water and the wastewater services to our customers directly. Um. I know we do have another project up at uh the Mill and Locust intersection, which is gonna be a big project coming up. Uh and we'll be reaching out to some of the neighborhood councils to discuss that. I do, since we have this platform, counselor, I do want to add that um we have some fairly significant gas relocations as part of this project. And it's gonna be really important that those gas relocations happen in order for us to meet schedule. So I did want to throw that out there, that a lot of our projects, you know, you're gonna see this intersection blown up essentially. But then you're gonna see it put back together, new curb, new pavement, curb to curb. Uh throughout this whole mill, the lower Mill Locust Main Street intersection. Um other utilities are gonna be required to renew. So we'll we'll do water, sewer, there'll be electric, there'll be gas. Um but there's a lot of coordination that's taking place um in these efforts and in this renewal. That you you're gonna see it in the neighborhoods uh when we're there. And I think a- anybody who's been part of the projects that we've done. Uh we always leave it better than we found it and and that's a fact. Um and and we've been doing that for a long time. So. Uh that's another twenty-plus million dollar project that we're gonna be doing. Um and and. A- and the list goes on and on, because soon as we finish with this five hundred and forty-nine million dollars, there's more to do. Um and I think currently, uh you know, our our optimism is a little tamped down just because the bidding environment is so bad. Uh and inflation is really affecting kind of, you know, that six months ago, that five hundred forty-nine million dollars. Seems to have been worth a lot more than it is now, but that's just uh the name of our business. And we'll continue to uh, you know. Bring uh bring forth the best projects that we can. But what I really want to emphasize is. Um the strategy and uh ability to compete for these loans. Um and they're loans, they're not grants or what allowing us to bring these projects in, save eighty-plus million dollars. Save fifteen to twenty years in the project schedule. And then the other hope, and I think uh counselor, you may have been the one who brought it up, but somebody had brought it up. Uh what are we gonna do? Uh I think somebody brought it up, could have been another meeting, but what are we gonna do with the Biden infrastructure money when it comes? And so what I can tell you, being plugged into that on a on the national level about some of the policymaking stuff. Uh the Biden infrastructure money is gonna be run through the state revolving fund programs. And we're one of the top users of the state revolving fund. So when we speak to um. How are we gonna get our hands on that money? You have to be in the queue um to get that money with the S R F. And as I said, we're one of the biggest users in the state. We have a really good relationship with the S R F programs, both the water and the drinking water side. And so uh I don't think we could be better positioned to receive any of the federal money that we are eligible for. Uh as you know, we have not been eligible for any of the ARPA money or any of the other um COVID relief money. Uh that's all municipal money. As an independent utility, we have not been eligible for any of that. Uh however, we absolutely are eligible for um the Biden infrastructure money. Because we're an environmental justice community, we should get a good piece of that. Um I'll add for those folks um that didn't see it, we just got a five million dollar grant in the form of debt forgiveness last week or a couple of weeks ago. Um, excuse me, uh that was given to us through the S R F program as well. So I think, you know. It goes unsaid a lot of the times, but we chase every nickel that we possibly can get. Um a- and I think it's, uh I I think we've done a really good job here in landing. Uh the WIFIA program, it's gonna help stabilize a lot of the issues that we're having and a lot of the risk that we've had. Um and that's, you know, that's essentially the the program over the next five years. It is five hundred and forty-nine million dollars plus projects that, you know, we're we're working through now that weren't on that list. So tremendous amount of work uh over the next five years and a tremendous accomplishment to get the funding in place. Uh because we would be really, really struggling had we not gotten that with the alone uh and been in the financial position we were to compete for it.
But with the alone is the EPA loan?
Yep.
And Josh, can you send a project or a a list of all thirty-one projects?
Sure.
Yep. And then the other question I have is, have you gotten any federal relief funds directly?
Not a, not a nickel.
Okay.
Not, not from uh, not from uh COVID. Any COVID, any COVID relief or ARPA? No, we're not, we're not eligible. Uh it's a statutory uh issue. Uh the language that has come out of the feds uh excludes uh and.
I recall signing on to a bunch of nationwide letters about that and.
Yes, yeah. You know, I think we talked about it last year. Um and and we've spoken to all of our legislators about it. And uh we've been in contact with the folks at the state level to make sure that we could try to get um. Funding through the state ARPA money where we would have been eligible, but we weren't able to get a line item uh in that funding. Some places were, we did not. Um so we continue to, we we continue to shake the tree uh as much as we can.
Could the, could the Biden infrastructure money, uh and there's a couple of questions in the chat I want to make sure we get to as well.
Oh, I didn't even see that.
Biden, it's okay. Well, I'll I'll repeat them or have counselors ask, but could the Biden infrastructure money? I- if it, once it comes into the state revolving fund, if we're on the list, could it accelerate the timeline on any of the projects? Because it would be an influx of cash?
No, I, counselor, I I, it's accelerated. You know, the, we got the pedal to the pedal to the metal. It it, you can't accelerate projects of this magnitude. Um that is gonna make any difference to 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 folks like you who are looking at it from afar. Um it's not, we got the money, which is the hardest thing, right? So the money's there. It's, it just takes time to design appropriately bid and build um any of these projects. I mean, you look at that river, you look at the River Crossing and Pump Station project, um you know, that that started more than ten years ago. Right? And now we're halfway through the pro- I I honestly, it started more like sixteen years ago. Um but these pro- projects of this magnitude that require permitting, funding, design. Um take a really, really long time. And so if we could accelerate it any faster, we would. Um and and that's just, that's just the reality of projects of this magnitude, of this complexity. And of this uh of the need for the permitting for these, in particular, the one you're seeing there uh on the screen.
Okay. I want to want to make sure we get to a couple of the questions that uh that counselors had. I know Counselor Whitfield um had had asked for a question to be answered during this round. Around your diversity, equity and inclusion goals. Counselor Whitfield, did you want to add to that at this time or you just want Josh to answer the question?
No, I'd just like them to answer. I, I just noticed on the leadership team, there was no people of color and I just wanted to. Um have that addressed and see if there's any plans for diversity um on that level.
Yeah, counselor, appreciate that. And uh that's not our entire uh leadership team for the record. But um, you know, right now, what we have in place is um some women and minority requirements. In all of the contracts that are gonna be part of the WIFIA program. Um and we have some uh some goals in there. Um and for internally here at the commission, uh we don't have any set written policy for that. We look at all of our applicants when we uh when we get them. We don't, it's something that we can uh absolutely address and plan on addressing. I think uh going back to just pre-pandemic, we reshaped our H R division. Um and then the pandemic hit and we've just been struggling with the pandemic uh ever since. So uh diversity, equity and inclusion is something that's on our list of things to address. We're trying to get through the pandemic and regroup. Uh we've really had a hard time retaining employees and hiring the employees. To do this program, the work that we're talking about, uh has been really difficult for us to get the people on board to do it. So uh I can assure you, i- it's part of our grand plan. Um it's not something that's on the front burner right now, because right now, we're we're trying to get these projects moving forward. And get through the pandemic. We had close to twenty percent of our staff out with COVID two weeks ago. Um so it's just been a real challenge. And um I think we've lost a lot of people. Not not, you know, we've had, we've lost a lot of employees who have moved on to greener pastures uh in the past two years as well. So um I think if you folks, y- y- you're all paying attention, it's it's hard to hire people right now. Um people are struggling to find uh folks to uh fill positions of a variety uh of uh requirements. So may not be the answer you wanted, um counselor, but be glad to discuss that further as well.
Um no, it's not, that is not the answer I wanted, but I think that whenever you hire, it should be at the forefront. I'm not saying like, you know. Fire all your staff and hire new people. I'm just, I'm saying like, whenever you hire, it should be. Um a consideration and something that you think about.
We do, we we do, and our H R folks uh do that. I mean, that the the reality is, we're involved in some uh STEM program stuff. Uh with stick and and developing some other programs. We just don't see a lot of minority folks. Applying for the leadership and management uh roles. And there's a ton of programs that we're involved with nationally. Uh that speak to uh getting minorities into STEM programs and into the water sector. And so we 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 do, we do, we dabble in a lot of that stuff. And we have a unique program with stick that we started up as well. Uh that's trying to reach out to those folks. So we're gonna continue in those things and develop them further. Uh and glad to talk anytime, counselor, as you know.
Thank you.
Uh thank you, uh Counsel Whitfield. And I I don't see any uh more hands in the in the queue. So I think we are headed towards the conclusion of of this meeting. Um but I did want to speak to a question that Counselor Govan. Uh had wanted to ask and she had leave for a for another meeting. Uh but as you're considering these infrastructure projects, you know, how are you incorporating? Uh sustainability goals, especially in line with, you know, what the state has has uh, you know, set as its sustainability and renewable energy goals. In terms of, you know, moving away from fossil fuels. How does, how does that tie into, you know, how we're powering the water system? And what your, what your goals are for for the future in that regard?
Yeah, we have a whole slew. Uh that's a whole nother. Yeah, we have a whole slew. That's a whole nother conversation. But what I can tell you is that we within that with the program. We have a hydroelectric project. That will help to power the new treatment plant as well. That feasibility seems to be questionable right now. But we actually do operate and own a hydroelectric facility. And that's part of our portfolio of projects that are coming up here and we're figuring some of the things out with that. But the the new plant will be as energy efficient as it can be. We're looking at hydroelectric for battery storage and for actually generating the electricity that that plant needs. So that's part of it. But even aside from that. We sell electricity to the grid at the wholesale rate. That accounts for green energy and non emitting energy already. So we're we're decades and decades. Ahead of the curve on that. The only thing I can say is that that power plant of ours is the same vintage as everything else. And it needs a lot of investment too. So we have a pre nineteen thirty five power plant. That has not had a nickel invested in it and needs a lot of work, but it is an asset of ours that we plan to capitalize on.
Thank you. All right, councillors, are there any any further questions for Josh on H A A five or on the capital plan? This evening and certainly we will have more opportunities to discuss various capital projects this year in the maintenance and development committee relative to. Josh, the Mill and Mill and Main project that you mentioned, you know, we can certainly liaison with that as well, though I'm sure Chris and D P W are on. On top of it with EverSource. But we'll want to, we'll want to make sure that that's handled appropriately for the neighborhood as well. So seeing seeing none, I think we're gonna, we're gonna move towards closing. I think just in closing, Josh, I would say, you know, I appreciate you, you sharing this information. With us and the updates, you know, when we started discussing this two years ago, you know, I I had similar concerns to what I have now, but. Glad to see there's a plan in place. I mean, certainly this is something that we're hearing from constituents regularly on and it's fair to say that. You know, you have not been in, the the Water and Sewer Commission has not been in continuous violation of this since we spoke two years ago. I mean, there's been several quarters where the. The numbers have been below what is necessary, but I think, you know, when when we're dealing with the public health, we want to make sure that there's a lot of scrutiny. On everything that's being done, that there's, you know, accountability and and that's where we come in. But we do appreciate your efforts and and the path that we're headed down. And I think that it will, I think ultimately lead us to even cleaner and more safe water, but we want councillors to be in a position. Where they can answer these questions when constituents are asking and and we certainly want to get as much info out there. I will say two years ago, we did have extensive conversation about this. We also, I also spoke with at that time. D E P toxicologist on the matter as well, who was, you know, sharing similar information to what the Water and Sewer Commission is. So. The only other thing I would add is in these notices, it would be helpful as we go forward if they, and I again, I know it has to be approved by D E P. One thing D E P did share with me is that, you know, the at the time, two years ago, the total. The rate that it is set at is far below what they want, what would be harmful in their opinion. And so that's important to recognize. I still share concern, I still concerned about that because I think sometimes we know the data lags behind the signs, but. In this regard, you know, we're trying to get as much information out there. With that said, if if D E P would approve it, it would be helpful, I think, for residents to be able to see in the notices. Whether this quarter a violation occurred. Or if the violation is occurring as a result of the running average. I don't know if D E P would allow that revision, but that would be helpful.
I think we can, we can look at that. I think where we where we can do that is when we do. The notices are a little tighter on that, but on our press release. And the follow up information that we put out there, we have a lot more freedom of what we can and can't say, but. Councillor, I I'll certainly speak with the folks on the team here to see what we can do to to tweak that. It it may actually be in there and it may not, in D E P's eyes, it may not make a difference because it's a violation, whether it's part of the. Whether it's part of the. Of the quarter or the running average, but let us take a look at it. And we'll see what we can do.
Certainly. Well, thank you, Gagnon. We just want to make sure we have as much as much scrutiny and as much oversight as possible and and information being shared with the public. So. At this time, see no further questions. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from one of the members of the committee, councillor Kern or councillor Perez.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Perez, their second.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Kern. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.